Planning Commission, and I'd ask that you call the roll.
Chairman McGee.
Here.
Mr. Chair Hauser.
Here.
Mayor Bixson.
Here.
Mr. Gasson.
Here.
Mr. Bachmann.
Yes. Here.
Thank you very much. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. The first item is number three, public comment. I want to take a minute to remember James Risco. Probably people watching online appreciate him more than anything, but for years, he's been our director, producer, whatever the case may be. But James died the day before our last meeting on May 6, very suddenly, not expected. And I was just talking, that's his boss in there tonight filling in for him. They don't have him replaced yet. But he was a good guy. He's the guy that made sure the mayor's tie was straight and the cards were in the proper place out in front. And, you know, just a hard-working, behind-the-scenes guy. So if you don't mind, let's just take a minute to think about James. Thank you. The second item I'm going to stay in, public comment. I wish there were more of our members here tonight, but I have been asked to resign as the chairman of the Planning Commission. I know that you just appointed me a month ago, and I don't know if you've heard about this or not, David. I know that you have. But in any event, I could have resigned a month ago quietly, and I decided that since this is the body who made me the chairman of the Planning Commission, I wanted you to hear directly from me and my experience over the last month. This apparently goes back to the May 6 meeting and an encounter I had with a gentleman later in the evening. We had two pretty heavy-duty subjects at night, the short-term rental ordinance and then solar onyx, which has been up here 100 times. And it was moving forward. We had a lot of speakers. And toward the end of the public comments, a gentleman came up to speak who had been up before. And as any good chair knows, you need to manage these meetings to give subtle hints to both the one at the podium, but also the people out in the audience. I interrupted him, as I always do, very gently, and said, "I'm trying to move the meeting along." He'd been up 20, 30 minutes earlier. We knew very clearly what his opinion was on the subject. And I didn't want to start a round of people coming up for a second shot at it. So I interrupted him and said, "I'm trying to move the meeting along." He took great offense to that. All of you were here, you probably remember that. You were here in the room, as they say in Hamilton. And he raised his voice, and I probably raised mine a bit in return, saying, well, I think he said, "Are you cutting me off? Or is there a time limit up here?" And I said, "No, no time limit, but I'm just trying to move the meeting along." And he got to finish his comments, and that was the end of it. I guess I offended several city council members. I don't know who. But Nick did his duty, and a few days after the meeting, as this is one of the downsides of being a city manager, but he gets the task of calling the Planning Commission chairman and saying that people are so upset, and it's time for you to move on. So I didn't ask who made comments. It didn't really make any difference to me, just that they came from the council. And one of the comments was, "Well, that gentleman had more to say, and you interrupted him." And I did interrupt him, but he did have to say. And it was said, "Well, there were two women who spoke earlier in the night, and you didn't cut them off, and they talked on and on about extraneous things." I know that. I'm sure you remember those two people. The first one was here to speak on the short-term rental ordinance, and she was terrified. And it's my style to stay with those people. I know she wandered off about things in her life that didn't mean anything, but she also told us in the middle of it that one of the renters walked into her house unannounced, and she didn't know who it was. Well, they got the house wrong. But picture any of us sitting in the room here where that would occur to. And she was scared and angry and then afraid to be at the podium on top of it. I let her talk. The second woman prefaced her comments by saying, "I'm scared to death, and the last time I spoke at the podium at Rochester Hills, I fainted." Do you remember that comment? So I said, "Well, I get that one." So we stayed with her for quite a while. We had a bit of a counseling session and heard about a lot of things in her life that really didn't matter. But she got her thoughts out and returned. So then the comment was made that, "Well, Dennis is gone three months every year on vacation, and so Christian should become the chairman, and Dennis should stay on the Planning Commission and mentor Christian for the rest of his term." And I laughed, saying, "Does anyone who's seen Christian Hauser at the helm up here think that Dennis McGee can offer him any mentoring? I don't think so. I simply don't think so." So the comment was made that I'm gone a lot, and I said, "I remind you, Nick, we've been through this before many years, and I always keep in touch. I always talk closely to Nick. And more than once, I have flown back from Florida because Nick and I decided that there was something on the agenda that was so important that the chairman should be here." I came back at my own expense. I have never asked the city for 10 cents in reimbursement. I'm the one who left. I'm the one who had to come back. Not a problem. That is really troubling. But the comments that offended me the most and troubled me the most were words to the effect that, "Is Dennis losing it? Or Dennis has lost it?" Or words to that effect. I'm a 77-year-old, 26-year resident of this city. I don't think I've lost it. My initial reaction was to get angry and quit, because that's what people do. And then I decided, "I'm not doing that, but I will defer to the mayor. The mayor has to run the city, and life will move on." So I sit here tonight, you know, thinking deeply about these things, and I have decided that it's in the best interest of the Planning Commission and a good relationship that we have built up with the city council. So effective immediately, I resign as chairman of the Rochester Planning Commission. Christian, this meeting is yours. You're the vice chair. I'll trade you seats.
We're on public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, if I may, just have a quick word. And I don't want to get too deep in the weeds here, but Dennis, I want to let you know that I appreciate everything that you've done for the city. I appreciate the mentoring that you've provided me from day one up until while we spoke while you were gone. Okay? And I know that this is, there's a lot going on here. There's a lot of moving parts, and I'm kind of caught flat-footed here. But nevertheless, I know I appreciate very much the work that you've done for the city, and I hope that you will continue to stay on the Planning Commission. I really, truly do. You have a lot of experience. You have a lot of wealth of knowledge, and I think you certainly can contribute and will contribute by staying on the Planning Commission. And that's my sincere hope, Dennis. I really, truly do. I certainly, you know, will defer to the other members. But again, that's my view, Dennis, and I mean that sincerely. Okay?
Appreciate that, Chris.
You're very welcome. Okay. Why don't we continue with public comment, line item number three? Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? Yeah, and Rose, is there anyone online?
No one online.
Okay. That being said, we'll move to line item number four, approval of the minutes, consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 6, 2024. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Second. Richard? Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Vice Chairman, just a brief discussion.
Go right ahead.
On the item 6B.
Is that to set a public hearing at 120 South Main?
That is the rental ordinance.
Yep, short-term rental, yep.
Short-term rentals. So I think there may need to be a clerical correction to the motion. And I don't know if you need me to cite that in the document, but I believe Commissioner Hauser provided the motion, supported by Gasson, and then subsequently supported by Bixson. Commissioners Gasson and Bixson.
All right, let me just look here for just a quick moment.
There's motion by Gasson.
There's motion by Gasson, yes.
Supported by Bixson, is that true?
You know what? I'm going to have to go back and check the video.
Rose, Rose will check it.
Okay.
That's why I suggested a clerical correction. It's at the 1 hour, 20 minute, 40 second mark, if that helps.
We'll get that right tomorrow.
Okay, so, subject to that clarification, if necessary, any further discussion?
I will amend.
Okay, I'll be amended. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Hauser.
Yeah.
Yes.
I was going to say, roll call. Oh, yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Mayor Bixson.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Gasson.
Yes.
Mr. Bachmann.
Yes.
Mr. Kenji.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Don't hide from it.
Okay. Line five, public hearings. I don't have any on the docket, so we'll go right to number six, consideration of site plan approval for 239/269 South Street, request to set a public hearing. Mr. City Manager.
Yep, Vidya is ready, queued up here to work with this organization. So Mr. Kemp, who was the petitioner, was out of town this evening, but I know his team is here, so they'll be able to answer after any questions that Vidya might bring up.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Nick, and members of the commission. At the city's request, we have conducted a preliminary review of a request from Kemp Brothers. I will share the site plan on my screen, so the planning commission can see it. The request is to construct two speculative multiple-tenant industrial buildings with a combined area of about 19,293.75 square feet. The site has got two parcels of land, both of which the applicant has acknowledged will be combined after site plan approval. You're aware that one of these parcels has an existing residence along with a detached garage-type type of building back towards the Clinton River itself. Both the sites have a combined area of 1.47 acres, and the site is located on the north side of South Street in the I-2 Industrial 2 district. At this time, as I mentioned, these are speculative industrial buildings, so the applicant does not have tenants for them. In the future, when they get the tenants, as long as the uses are principal permitted industrial uses, they can go in and occupy the building. If any of the future tenants happen to be listed as special exception uses under the I-2 district, they will have to come back before the planning commission seeking additional approval. Now, this site is on the north side of South Street. South Street has got only one lane on each side, and there are numerous driveways on the south side of the road. The applicant has attempted to align their driveway that enters the property reasonably with the exceedingly wide concrete approach for the property to the south. No matter what is done, because South Street is a relatively narrow street, trucks moving in and out of this site and all the other industrial developments, there will be some amount of traffic issues on the road, which is unavoidable going to the design of South Street itself. One of the biggest points of discussion that we have had with the applicant's architect, the distance, this is the first speculative industrial building. This is the second one. The distance between the two buildings is exactly 70 feet. Now, the crosshatched AVTS that you see on the east side of this building and on the west side of this building, this is where the loading dock or the overhead doors are located. So we had asked the applicant to submit a truck circulation diagram, which I shall go to the specific sheet that has the truck circulation diagram.
Vidya, can you hear us? You froze.
Does anyone have her cell number to text her?
Yeah.
I think she was just about to recommend approval.
I'll have to get the procedure book out, then we'll check that.
Nick, can you go through that, or?
I can't. I don't.
Let's text her, and just maybe she has to log out and back in.
Yeah, I will.
Hasn't happened in a while.
No, I know. It's been pretty good. I can tell you that, I don't have her report right in front of me, but she was worried about circulation, the trucks moving in and out. The developer was talking about that. Again, something that we can work through in the next month, because tonight, we're just asking to set up a public hearing. She had concerns about the look of the building, and her and I have this discussion that's not our purview. It's a site plan. Planning Commission can make comments. Developer gets the right to explain why they're making a building look like they do. What else did she have in there? She's texting me back, let's see. She can log out and back in, and she can, he can hear her, so she needs to log out.
That's fine.
Yeah. Log back in. Give her one second here. Still not a fan of these kind of meetings. It's like...
Do we ever see that coming to an end?
We've had a discussion, Mayor, right? If the city council pulled the trigger and said no more, then we would kick it down, yeah. But until that happens, probably not. Okay, here's Vidya right now. Vidya, if you log out and log back in, because you're frozen up here. Jeff can hear you, but we can't.
I have actually done that twice, Nick.
Oh.
In fact, nobody on Zoom can see the meeting. I mean, we can see you and hear you, but Jeff, Rose, none of us, you can't hear any of us. We are all three talking.
Okay, that's weird. Yeah, I'm going to put you on my speakerphone. I think it'll pick up here, so.
Yes, sir.
Put your speakerphone.
Yeah, I'm going to put my speakerphone right by the mic. Can you just keep talking, Vidya, okay?
Okay.
All right. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, apologies, commission members.
That's good. That works.
For some reason, everybody on Zoom can hear you, but you can't hear any one of us. So the concern we had was the fact that the circulation between the buildings is only, the distance is 70 feet, and the truck circulation shows trucks driving through the site but not backing up to these overhead doors. So the architect had explained to us that these are speculative buildings, and typically, the tenants who use these spaces have smaller box trucks. So my question was, if these buildings are speculative, how would we know what kind of trucks a potential tenant might have? The concern being, if any one of the future tenants has a semi-truck or a truck with a larger trailer, the only way loading/unloading activity can take place is if the truck is parked right in the middle of the aisle, loading and unloading. So doing so would end up blocking the entire circulation on the site. You would have a truck parked right here until all of its activity is completed. So this is an issue that we have been going back and forth with the applicant. So I had deferred the applicant to the planning commission for them to explain this issue to your satisfaction, because I still have reservations about the fact that there is not ample distance for a truck to back to a loading dock or an overhead door. On the northeast corner of the site plan, if you would see, there is an existing building. This is, used to be a storage shed previously for the single-family dwelling that was there. The applicant is proposing to retain that building and use it for storage, which is fine, because storage is allowed in the industrial site. However, the building is located within the 30-foot landscape stabilization zone. The Clinton River, any, abutting any river or trail, our ordinance has a requirement that there is a 30-foot landscape stabilization zone. Within this zone, the only activity that is permitted is landscaping, wetland restoration, or plantings. So the applicant is proposing, the only change they plan is to install permeable brick pavers in front of that building so that they can actually drive vehicles over it in order to access it. I would defer to the city's engineer and also to the Clinton River Trail Commission if that is acceptable, because even though the pavers are permeable, I want to make sure that such installation does not violate any rules that they might have for work to be done in the floodplain itself. The applicant has provided parking for the site based upon all of the unit tenant spaces being manufactured. So the site does have adequate parking. If any of these uses end up being warehousing, then the amount of parking required by that tenant space will be lesser. So the site is not short of any kind of parking. With regard to architecture, I, I'm going to try to share my screen again. Okay, my screen sharing has been disabled, which is unusual. So one of the biggest... Okay, I shall... I still don't have screen sharing. So in the meantime, one of the biggest concerns is when you are driving on South Street westbound, the first thing you're going to see is an overhead door on the building that's on the west side of the site. This is not, although the applicant has got a very well landscaped plan with a lot of trees and shrubs to be planted along the site's front porch, still, the first thing that you see on the site upon entering will be the overhead door to the west side building. In addition to that, the buildings that are being constructed are entirely 100% ribbed metal panelling, and they really have no architectural detailing of any kind. In the master plan that the city has worked on, even the older version and the latest version, this area along the Clinton River is envisioned as research tech kind of area where we have a more campus-type setting. It is envisioned that the buildings and the developments built on the north side of South Street, abutting the Clinton River Trail, have a more campus-like setting with a higher quality of architecture. We believe the all-metal-ripped panel buildings that are being proposed with no architectural detailing whatsoever do not really meet the intent of what the future look for this area is. This is once again an issue that the applicant has chosen to present before you. It is the applicant's contention that the all-metal buildings give, I quote, "a fresh look." We, however, believe some amount of masonry being incorporated along with vertical columns or other architectural details to break up the building mass will provide the site with a much more attractive appearance than something that would end up looking like two extremely large pole barn buildings. The applicant has also noted that any permits that they need from Eagle or MDNR or other regulating agency will be obtained, because a significant amount of work is being done right next to the Clinton River Trail and close to the 100-year floodplain line. Just wanted the applicant to be aware that in the event during such approval process, in order to meet any one of those agency requirements, if any of the improvements on the site happen to be shifted or moved, the applicant will have to come back before the planning commission for amended site plan approval. No signage is being proposed at this time. The applicant has submitted information for preliminary engineering and stormwater detention, and a note on the site plan states that the applicant intends to seek a variance from stormwater detention standards for the site. I will defer to the applicant to explain that or for Nick to explain that in a little bit more detail to you. And finally, the, as a new project that is being built, just like every other project in the city, the applicant is required to submit a sustainability evaluation. If the planning commission recollects, a few years ago, we updated the sustainability worksheet so that it recognizes the difference between industrial uses, mixed uses, and residential uses, and whether they are in close proximity to the downtown or not. The applicant has submitted a sustainability evaluation, but they have not self-scored them for any of the indicators, nor has a narrative been submitted explaining exactly what data they have included. For instance, they just note the length of a non-motorized pedestrian pathways is 126 feet. There is no explanation on what areas have been included in that 126 lienal feet. It says two pedestrian connections. I'm not sure where those two pedestrian connections are or what is being referred to. So the typical submission requirement is, when you submit a sustainability evaluation, the applicant self-scores themselves, and they give an explanation for each item, explaining why they believe that standard is met or not met. Based upon the limited information that we have at this time, this project is not sustainable. So with the applicant making any necessary revisions and providing additional information, the project might reach the sustainability level. So at this time, the project is before you for obtaining feedback and for scheduling of a public hearing. The plan still needs significant revision. Therefore, we have not made a recommendation for this to be scheduled for a public hearing. I defer to the planning commission. If you find the applicant's answers to the issues, specifically with regard to truck circulation on the site, the distance between the two buildings, and the architectural details, if the applicant can address those to your satisfaction, you could go ahead and schedule this for a public hearing at the next available agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Vidya.
Vidya, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Vidya?
Quick clarification.
Sure, Mr. Bachmann, go ahead, please.
I took particular interest in the city's master plan for the area, research and technology-based. And did I hear correctly, was it campus-style? Is that the look? And that's only on the north side of Second Street? That's the vision? Okay.
And you would call that a campus, basically?
Okay. All right. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Would you come up to the lectern, please, and state your name?
Yes, Ian Hurst from Kemp Building.
Mr. Hurst, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Nice to see you. Okay, the floor is yours.
I'd point out a couple of things. Obviously, this is what we proposed. I don't believe it looks like a pole barn at all. Some of the... Some of the architectural details we've added is masonry, pre-colored masonry block around the perimeter, around the main entrances. We also have canopies, metal canopies, another architectural detail. So certainly not a pole barn. The amount of glass, all the overhead doors will be glass. It's a high-tech look. It really is. As far as truck traffic, we don't have docks for semis, so this would be box truck traffic. If an occasional semi does have to make a delivery, just like at our house, it would park probably in the drive or the street. But I think they're great-looking and would be the best-looking buildings on South Street. But I'm here to answer questions.
Sure. Okay, commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Mr. Kenzik.
Yes. I guess the first thing is, it's noted here as this is not a traditional industrial development. Can you kind of tell us what you see as your vision and the type of occupants that you'll have?
Well, we have another multi-tenant building on South Street. I'm one of the occupants there, a commercial builder. We have a carpenter, another maintenance company that services fast-food restaurants. So it would vary. I mean, I don't really know, but you're talking about 3,000-square-foot units. Could be a number of different things. We don't have anything in mind. We, you know, we put it out there. We think it's a good-looking, usable building that people want to be in.
Mr. Kenzik, any further questions?
Not at this moment.
Mr. Gasson?
A couple, since we're really talking about the architecture. Is the presenter rendering the caller? Is the presented rendering the color... Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is that the color you anticipate?
That's... That is exactly what we're going for, correct.
Okay. And I think the inner part of the court has some interest architecturally. I think the major exposure parts would be parts that I would say, oh, boy, why are we doing that? It's all the long wall of the metal siding. I get it as a warehouse or maybe not warehouse, industrial use.
Yeah.
That makes a lot of sense from a construction and cost standpoint.
Well, it's not really a cost savings. It's a high-tech look. It's been... These corrugated metal panels are being used a lot in commercial construction now and high-tech construction, too.
Yeah, I think it could be very appealing and is a research development area. I think we would wind up seeing that kind of material because we do see it quite a bit. And actually, you just referenced that to this project. I was opposed to a project or an element of a project on Main Street that used that. And now over some...
I don't think it's a great look for Main Street either, myself.
Well, I didn't then either, but over time, it's not as big a problem as I thought it was going to be.
Sure.
So it's not a surprise to see it. My concern with it is the most visible elevations, which are the outer sides, is where you lack any interest at all. And if along that street, we're trying to develop or envision development of a slot-after industrial research and development-type space, I think this is setting a standard that we wouldn't want to be the mark for those outer elevations. I wouldn't say the same about the inner court spaces. I think that does, as you pointed out, have some masonry around the entries and some canopy. And I don't think the long horizontal metal siding is at all objectionable there. But I certainly think it lacks interest and consistency in what you're trying to say on those two outer elevations. I would hope that you could find a way to change that. And the planners mentioned some pier-like elements or something to break up that long view. That would be my input on that. I did have a question from a site planning standpoint. If you're going to have the occasional semi in there, and she pointed out real clearly the problem it's going to cause is they're going to park right in the middle and you're not going to have any in-or-out traffic for who knows how long. Considering that, did you look at the option of maybe having some kind of shared-use exit aisle to your neighbor on the east, if you went all the way to the back of the property where you have that small area of parking where you can kind of...
To my knowledge, we did not explore that option.
There are a couple of properties on South Street that do have that sort of arrangement.
Yes, we have, two of them.
Okay, well, you're familiar. And I think that would serve this project better, take away one of those concerns that it may not be a problem when we're talking about approving a plan, but in practicality, the real outcome is they're going to park on the street because you're not going to want them or the resident or tenants aren't going to want them to park in that middle area. I do see that as a big problem.
We... At 361, where I'm located, we have semis there occasionally and they stay off to one side and unload. That's... So we have gone through that and it's not presented an issue for us or our tenants.
You know, as a person reviewing from a planning standpoint, we look at what could happen and not everybody's good neighbors. That could be, again, that's my concern, that's an issue. And also on the site plan, I notice on that plan right there, there's two red lines that says 12-foot private easement. What's the nature of that easement?
Private easement? I don't know. Do you happen to know?
I don't know.
The private easement? I don't recall.
On the right?
Yeah, it goes from the right, only over the first building, then kind of stops. But there are utilities not in that easement. They're more to the north of that easement, which strikes me as odd. It seems like they have a public utility easement, which would make sense, but the private easement doesn't make sense.
I can't answer that question for you. We will get an answer to that.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Dan, any questions on your part? If not, that's perfectly okay and just going on.
I don't have questions for the applicant.
You do?
No, I don't think I do.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just kind of echo what Commissioner Gasson said about having the semi on the street. I mean, it's not like, you said, mention like your house. I mean, it's not like Amazon where they're coming by for 15 minutes. I mean, in theory...
They can back in there.
Well, but then you'd block the...
Block the...
So I mean, I think that's an issue that needs to be looked at.
Mr. McGee, any questions on your part?
No.
I guess I have a couple of questions. One, I like the look of it. My question, though, and maybe Mr. Banda, you could help me out, is, you know, part of my notes are, what does the future look for this area? You know, and you talk about a campus. I think that's where I'm kind of struggling from is what's the vision that the city sees in that district or in that area? Because that's, I think, important for me and maybe even the applicant to say, okay, hey, if that's what you want, I want to conform to that. Is there some type of guide? Is there some type of... So we're kind of just shooting blank here then, right?
We are. So, I mean, tech, those are tech buildings there. So, I mean, we... In the master plan process, we argue amongst ourselves, it seems like the tech should be on the other side of the street and this site should have been mixed use with residential looking at the river.
Right.
We never got there, so we left it at high-tech. So when we all built, when the swim club was built, when we all built his, it was, we recognized they're industrial buildings, but if they ever had to be retrofitted to something else, they had some character to them that they could be used for something else, like the swim club could fill in their pool, literally. So they're still industrial-looking buildings. So high-tech is an eye of the beholder. So we don't have design guidelines. We don't have them anywhere in town. The master plan did not identify those. They use the buzzword "high-tech" building. So again, if you go to Auburn Hills or South Illinois Bridge Industrial Park, you'll see a bunch of those buildings. So again, eye of the beholder.
Not to compare ourselves to other cities, but I'm thinking, you know, the area by like, in Birmingham, on Eaton Street over there. Is that the idea, you know, kind of where like the brewery is and you've got the condo?
No, that would have been mixed use.
Okay.
So this is, high-tech was, buildings like that, just warehouses, small contractors. That's how our thought process was, not Eaton Street, that was mixed use because they have restaurants there. They have different things there, support delis and things, so... Oh, go ahead, Vidya. Vidya, go ahead.
If I may, for the benefit of the Planning Commission, just read out the intent statement from the Research Technology District in the master plan.
Good idea.
It says the Art Tech District is intended to accommodate users, research, testing, manufacturing, packaging, or technologically-related activities, which are a component of overall business activities. It further specifies that the district envisions developments that take advantage of the unique natural settings they are located in or that will allow for non-residential uses developed in harmony with preservation and enhancement of natural features. So basically, the design anticipated when we say campus setting is buildings oriented to take advantage of the fact that they are located right next to the Clinton River.
The issue I have with that...
Thanks, Vidya.
Thank you. The issue I have with that is we're going back to this intent issue, okay? And anyone who was listening to the meeting, you know, last Planning Commission, that was a substantive discussion topic of intent, okay? And it's not a mandate, it's not a requirement, it's obviously a guide. So it's not very clear, applicant, is what I'm trying to say.
Correct.
And so I guess my... This is just my own thoughts. My knee-jerk response is I think they're tasteful buildings. I think they're fine. I think obviously you've heard some comments from the Commissioners and they want to see some enhancements probably to the front elevation. I don't know if that's possible or not. And I think there's some concerns about truck access, in particular semi-access. I, you know, I think if you're able to come back and address those issues as well as some of the other substantive issues that were in those letters, I think, my view is it probably warrants, you know, a public hearing on it, but it's going to require you, Mr. Hurst, obviously have to come back and probably retool some of those things. I don't know if that's something you're willing to consider or not. I'm just trying to gauge the feeling of my colleagues here.
Possibly, yeah. I mean, we like the look of it. We think we've achieved the directive and if there's, you know, if everyone here doesn't love it, I understand that. I don't love every building I see either.
Right. And I don't think it's necessarily we don't love it. I think we need to address some of these issues that are in this letter. Mr. Banda, what do you think?
No, I think we can sit down and talk. I think it's the long east and west thing. So we could look at putting some relief in there and there could be fake windows in there, something to break it up. The other issues, I like the idea of exploring, trying to get around the building to the next site, so if that's an out, if that's possible, and if you guys have access to that, that would be great. So I... We can do that in the next couple of weeks, so I don't think we need to delay this for a public hearing. If we don't have answers at the next public hearing, we just table the public hearing. So we don't want to become obstructive. We want to keep things moving if we can. These are not overcomable, but we need to address what Vidya asked for, and we will. So if we can't do that in the next two to three weeks, then we wouldn't actually have a public hearing.
Right. And Mr. Hurst, that's what I would say, too, is because when you come back for the public hearing, obviously, these issues are going to be more pronounced and everyone's going to have more of an opportunity and the public may come back and have some comments. So to the extent that you can get in front of those, to the extent that you're able to mitigate some of those issues, it probably warrants another sit-down with the city to tool some things. And my personal view is I think they're very tasteful buildings. I just need to better understand the look and how they're going to play in with some type of future development. And I'm not saying no. I'm saying I just think maybe a couple minor tweaks here and there might get you across that hurdle.
Okay.
All right. Commissioners, Mr. Kenzick?
Yes, I got a couple follow-up questions here. First of all, in regards to the parcel that's at 239 South Street, or I believe it's the address of 239, the very corner near the river shows a border. We can't really see it on this diagram, but I went on the Oakland County Gateway and the very corner of that lot is not part of the property. It appears to belong to whoever owns property on the other side of the river. Are there any easements or anything that allows that owner to get to his corner?
Yeah, we'll look that up. Oakland, the gateway could be off by 10 feet. That's a bad line, but we'll make sure we check that.
Okay. And then the other thing I'm interested in is that building that is off near the river, that's actually a garage right now?
Correct.
It's not a, it wasn't a former residence or anything like that? What condition is it in?
It's in pretty good condition. It's masonry, so it needs paint, I'm sure.
Okay. Because I guess the thing is, I see, again, I'm pleasantly surprised by the look of this building. I thought it was going, based upon the drawings, to be something very plain Jane. But I guess if you're building something that looks this nice, why would you continue on with that older building that's in the back of the property? It seems like it's going to take away from, you know, the look that you're trying to achieve. So that's just an observation. And then I guess another question, then, this is really probably directed to Mr. Banda, is have you had a chance to take a look at the trees that are going to be removed? Because it's noted that there are seven landmark trees.
Yeah, so again, when people automatically put, if it's over 18 inches landmark, none of those are landmark trees. So I did look, yeah.
Okay. So then I guess what that leads into is they're looking at putting in 54 replacement trees? That's probably too many. And taking a look at the landscape plan, especially on the east side of this building on the right, you've got it lined with trees. I would make a recommendation that since most of them are planted like only 10 feet apart or so, and you've got several rather large trees that, they'll be very large trees at maturity, take a look at the calculations again, probably pull a few trees because do yourself a favor. 10, 15 years from now, you're probably going to be replacing those trees. Not only are they too close together, they're also too close to the building. The backside of those are not going to get any sunlight.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I have a comment for Mr. Kendrick. That's a big statement because he has just planted 20 trees with the mayor on Saturday at his association. I wanted to make sure that, I think a rendering of the east and west would help. If you see how many trees are there, that might negate the necessary, for a lot of architectural stuff. They're very green and I would agree. I think they're probably too close. We haven't gotten to that detail yet, but there's much more room on the west side than the east side, but that will break up that long stretch with the vegetation immensely, actually. But right species, you're right, you want columnar trees there. We don't want big oaks hanging over the building. So we'll go over that with you, too. So good observation.
Mr. Gasson?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, to the applicant. My caring on about those elevations, I think in light of what Commissioner Kenzick and Nick Banda just said, I think tasteful landscaping could mitigate some of what I'm thinking those walls could look like. I don't not look at them, but I think the landscaping could soften that look up quite a bit. So I'll be anxious to see what those renderings look like and maybe the changes that you put forward.
So if I may suggest, if we're going to go to a public hearing, just, I would suggest that the motion be to the next available public hearing. So if we get, we need 15 days advance, and in the next two weeks, if we don't make any progress, then I'm not going to schedule because we're just wasting money advertising. So we have a little window here to talk in the next couple of weeks. And Tom Kemp's had business down here for a long time, the partner, and Tom's very passionate. He's used to, South Street was the land that time forgot, and he saw Rewald's building and he saw Goldfish. And that's, we're glad to see that. They were the ones that were going to purchase because they have buildings on the street. We tried to explain to him and he understood that. We're trying to take it to that next level because you're right, this is going to be here forever. So you're kind of setting the bar on that side of the street. So all good comments and he didn't disagree, and I think we can come to some agreement, so.
No, and to be very clear, Mr. Hurst, I like the drawings. I like what you presented. I think some elevation, some pictures that have, you know, the other sides to it, you know, and kind of some different views would certainly be helpful. And again, for my own edification, I need to better understand kind of what the forward thinking view is. You know, it's kind of, you're playing a pool, you want to think a shot ahead, and I want to make certain that if something like this is going to be approved, does this set the benchmark for everything else? And it's, candidly, there's a lot of decisions that have to be made on this project. So it's not bad, it's just we have to work out some kinks. So with that being said, if there's any further comment, I guess we would, I'd ask if there's a motion to set this for a public hearing at the next available date. So moved.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Or...
In support by Mr. Gasson. Okay, discussion. Any other council members? Okay, roll.
Mr. Chairman, Howser, sorry. Mr. McGee? Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gasson?
Yes.
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Mr. Kendrick?
No.
Okay. So the motion passes, they'll fight that, so, okay.
Okay, so we will set that for a public hearing at the next available date. You'll obviously work with Mr. Banda and the city and they'll, you know, work out the modifications that we've discussed up here.
Very good. All right, gentlemen, thank you.
Mr. Hurst, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to, pardon me, line item number seven miscellaneous. Mr. Banda?
Just have a couple things. Might be the season, I'm not sure. Everybody's kind of always dabbling and getting us stuff on time and we're not going to try to jam things. We've got enough to do, so after your next meeting, there could be a pay-in lieu of. We're struggling with a property owner right now to have them understand why they need to do that instead of just upgrade their facility without doing pay-in lieu. So we're going to deal with that one. Possibly an outdoor dining or two that they're still trying to work through the details on. We did get plans in for the former Moon River Soap Company. It's quite nice. It's a mixed-use building, retail pizzeria, the Rito and Joe Nerd, the group from Silver Spoon purchased that property. So they're looking at a casual restaurant on the first floor and then offices on the next two floors. They had already purchased 10 in lieu of spaces, knowing that we, the preliminary look is for 30 par, they need to buy 30 parking spaces. And the initial reaction was, we just told somebody on South Main, 120 South Main, they wanted 37 spaces, but we have a parking structure across the street. We have a parking lot next to it. And the mayor's familiar with this, Mr. Knapp clearly reminds us of the parking spaces behind, the parking lot behind the chop house is very heavily used all the time. But Moon River always used the deck. They had zero parking on their site. They have one little loading zone in the back. So that'll be a discussion item that, it's not a slam dunk because we'll have to have that discussion of how many spaces pay in lieu of are too many. So we'll have to have that discussion possibly. And then we will see the first iteration of the gram, which is the DDA has purchased the former veterinarian clinic that you all had approved as the Brown Iron Brewery Restaurant, and they decided not to go ahead with that. They sold that for their, in a contract with the DDA to purchase that to turn it into a year-round indoor facility, augmenting the farmer's market and other items for the community. And then with the outdoor stage and it's, they, it's the next iteration of what was going to be the front porch project that you've all heard about. So this is an indoor facility with a stage, with upgrades to it, shades, shelters. They would use their own part, they own the DDA lot, the farmer's market lot, so they So, they would use that as part of their function, et cetera. So, we're gonna see the first look at that in July. And if we can get there, we'll schedule a public hearing for August. So, still busy next month, so hopefully, everybody can make it. And we'll move on from there. That's it.
And the next meeting is when, sir?
July, is it the third? I think it's the, I think it's the third. Let me make sure.
Hang on one second. Let me just double check here myself.
It's July first, actually. So, the fourth is on a Wednesday, Thursday. So, we would have our meeting that Monday. I think if people are gonna take off, they would more likely take off the eighth. We have a council meeting that night, though, so.
People are gonna be here.
Yeah, do people plan on being here July first, that you know of so far?
Okay. All right. Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Okay. Public com, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just, I was just, I'd ask Nick about those brownstones. You might want to give a update, the deck to the Vito building.
Oh, yeah, on the Main Street there.
Some comments that it didn't look very good, but there was
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, remember, we had five units there. And they're all separated by eighteen inches to three feet because of the, it was being built under the RT allowance within the OS one district. So, right now, it looks like they're kind of ugly and hanging out there. So, two units have been sold, which is the trigger to get the rest of them going. So, he, Mr. Schneider actually paved all, parking, the driveways and behind the garages. The alley leveling is next, and now he will start digging the next set of holes. So, when you see it all in its completion, the ends have windows and are gussied up, if you will. They're not just a blank wall. Right now, you're just seeing the inside of an interior wall. So, I can understand why people looking at it are like, that's all you got? No, it'll be much better and finished and a lot softer than landscaping all around the periphery as well as the front courtyard. So, if people have a little bit of patience, that's been a tough journey. But they sold for like one point two, one point three million. So, the quality's there. It's a good, he's a good builder. And hopefully, now he'll start the next three buildings soon.
That was my next question. So, the two are done. He's got three more to go. Can we expect that the next three will?
When he digs the hole, dig all three of the holes next. Correct.
Any comments from the commissioners on anything else?
I can say one more thing.
Go ahead.
The fact that one twenty South Main voluntarily withdrew after last week's comment, code enforcement, we're having a meeting with the owner of the property, not the developer, to say, tear the building down. I think they're not gonna exercise, the owner who owns the collision shop will not buy the cleaners. That, the developer's gonna buy both of them, right? So, it'll be back to the cleaners. The folks in LA will own that. We'll keep working with them on code enforcement. And then weeds and parking lot and trees and the alley all are on Mr. Riley. And we're meeting with him, I think, Thursday, the chief, the suite chief. Is that where we're trying to get to him? Okay. So, but we're on it. We see that he was waiting to see, hopefully, demo the whole building quickly. It doesn't look like that's gonna happen. So, we'll, we're on it.
And I can tell the other commissioners here, there's been a lot of discussion on city council about blight and cleaning up and some modifications to the ordinance. So, those are, you'll start to see some of that stuff, too. Because I know that house over on Third Street that we talked about, that's, yeah.
Yep. So, I do have one more. So, during the week, because of the SolarOnics discussion, we met with a, happens to be a ZBA member, Cody Smith. And he had some questions about the upcoming, he lives on Ludlow, and trying to educate himself as to how we looked at the SolarOnics calculations, the master plan, what is RT versus RM. So, we've been trying to work with him to get through some of the math, et cetera. And at the city council meeting, I'm sure he's gonna ask some of those questions. And I talked to Vidya. We talked to Crot. They're both comfortable with answering those questions at the meeting. Because other people might have those same questions. And it's complicated. And Vice Chair Hauser talked about that intent language. So, one of the things that Mr. Smith brought up at the meeting, if you remember, was in the intent section of the RM one, it talks about in the future, any future buildings in RM one should be built to RM two standards. And none of us can understand, is it a typo? It doesn't seem to be a typo. We don't know what it meant. So, in talking with Mr. Smith, it's like, that's what opened the door to make sure we don't want the developer to be able to come back and use that against us to say, hey, I'm not gonna build this one. It says right there, I can do RM two. So, we're gonna actually fix, all the intents are being rewritten in the master plan rewrite of the zoning ordinance. That might take six months. So, we committed that we would fix the ones that we see that are problems. So, Attorney Crot will probably have, come back, and we'll take that language out of the RM one district starting next month. Just so we can, anytime we identify things that don't make any sense, we get rid of them. And Cody's used to that, because at the ZBA, if we run into a three or four exact same variance being asked for, that's probably means something's not right in the ordinance. And then we go back to the planning commission and fix those. So, this is not out of the ordinary. So, there's a good chance we might bring that correction back to that intent. Because none of us can figure out what the intent was back then. It's different.
With respect to the math and the calculations, is it possible to really make sure that Vidya or Jeff or whomever, the city, has all that math ready to go and hand out? Because it's gonna be complicated, and I know it's gonna be a topic of conversation.
It is. We're trying to not put the city council in a position, we're not talking about the site plan. But people have the right to ask what they want to ask, and they're going to. And it's really a calculation. It's in the zoning ordinance. Again, we didn't write it. But there's a number. It says RT, thirty-two hundred square feet per lot. It's one lot. So, which makes no sense, was that? And when Mr. Smith looked at it, he's like, well, if it's a duplex-type situation, is that thirty-two hundred for every two units or for every one unit? So, Vidya went through all that before, but we'll have her do that again, so anybody can figure it out. And he's asking great questions, so.
They're very good questions. And I know he doesn't, he's not the only one who has those questions.
He is not. Correct.
And I know city council members have those questions. So, to the extent that the city planner can break it down in elementary math for people like me, it's gonna go a very long way.
Yeah, and we will do that.
Okay. Mr. Commissioner, commissioners, any other questions?
Yeah, I just have one question. So, remember, we had all those meetings where we were gonna upgrade the master plan? And we went through all, you know,
Yeah.
Where does that stand right now?
Yep. So, after going through, so that was because it was Beckett and Raider, and they moved on. So, we got back with McKenna, and we're waiting for a quote to finish that project. Because there's two districts that never went through city council. The other ones went but were never published, so they don't exist.
Did we go through?
We all did here, yeah. So, it's just the two at city council. So, we're gonna, we have to bring all of them back one more time and go through it again. More importantly, we have to rewrite the zoning ordinance. And nobody back then had budgeted money for that. That's a task. You have to turn those districts into words. And McKenna is working, gonna work on that. So, that's Jeremy Peckins' number one priority, get this through. We gotta get it done. Because right now, we're still under the same, the old zoning ordinance, and it's too confusing for people. We are committed to it, then we need to finish it. It's been way too long.
Do you think that's something that can be done by end of this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we could tell people, it's our expectation that this is gonna be revised and updated and in effect by December thirty-first?
Absolutely. Because we actually talked about, there was nothing, we could come back to this commission and city council and say, you know what, after all of this, two iterations of a master plan, and nothing's any clearer, just leave the existing zoning arts. We live with the zoning arts every day. There's nothing wrong with it. But I think the master plan was a good exercise. There were some things that were appropriate over now it's ten years that have changed, and we addressed those in the new master plan. So, we can support the master plan, the intents, the districts. We just need to get them solidified and put into words that can turn into a zoning ordinance so that the folks can know what they're dealing with. So, the answer is, we're going to go forward with it, just as it was passed, and tweak the little things that we found. We went, we spent probably a day in Northville, went over every single word in every single district with Mr. Jackson and his team. Vidya was there to make sure we didn't miss anything. And anything that we thought has changed even in the last four years, we could bring that up when we get to the district. So, I think there's a path forward by the end of the year, for sure.
Okay. Commissioners, anything else on that issue? Okay. Moving on, line item number eight, public comment. Any further public comment? Appears not. Okay. So, with that being said, I don't see any further issues. So, at seven fifty-eight, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay.